Recording in progress.
Authorize the regular meeting of the Rialto City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garrens?
Here.
Mayor for Tim Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Orr?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall?
Excuse me. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Before public presentations, I just want to take a moment to offer our sincere condolences and heartfelt sympathy to the families of the World Kitchen workers who were killed today in Israel. The World Kitchen was here for us. They were here from the beginning of our earthquake disaster until long after. They were in then went to McKinleyville to help them in Trinidad because they were having water issues. The World Kitchen helps anywhere they are needed, but they helped us specifically and we are so grateful for them and just want to, if anyone hears this anywhere or just who's ever listening, people in this room, we need to, you know, send them as much strength from our heart as we can and just offer them our greatest deepest sympathy. And from there, I will close that and go to public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph N. Brown Act. Items requiring council action as listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Councilmembers, how you all doing?
Good. How are you?
I'm good.
Good.
Stephen Saunders here. Just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for finally seeing the sewer building the right way. Thank you for that and thank you for the future of Rialto. I'm still not back in my own ship. And, and so for future emergencies and just after, they won't have to go through what I went through. And that's a beautiful thing. I'm proud that I stood up and spoke my words that I did and I believe it was heard. And thank all of you for that. That's pretty much it. I have a good, good friend in town that's not doing so well. So we're going to go over and see what we can do to help out. Just wanted to make sure I came by. Wanted to come back last month. I had COVID for like 22 days or something. I wasn't going anywhere. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
The World Kitchen?
The World Kitchen.
There was quite a number of them.
Seven.
Seven.
Okay, we will close public presentations and move on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said, just a real short one.
Yeah. Hello, City Council. I was just wondering if we have a cleaning schedule for the Rialto Sosha Bridge. It's in, is it an annual cleaning? The bridge is looking pretty dirty lately and it would be wonderful if it was cleaned up and while we're at it, have the graffiti removed so its beauty can shine. If it's not an annual cleaning canopy. And that was it.
Thank you. I will, we will take that up into consideration, but I believe it's a Caltrans situation. Now we will close public presentations and move to the consent calendar. Who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Any hand raised? Any emails? Then is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
No.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
So I didn't.
Your motion is the second. Motion carries four zero. City manager and staff updates, page forty in our packets. City managers.
Thank you, Mayor Garrens and members of the council. So you may have noticed last week, there was a press release that was covered in the Los Angeles outpost regarding the Monument Road storm damage repair project. As you know, there have been numerous frivolous related to FEMA and getting that project moving forward. I was able to confer with the county today on the status of that project. We're hoping to gain a little bit more clarity over the next couple of weeks or so, but our understanding that the funding is now officially in the pipeline, but there are still some more steps to go through before we get there. We do appreciate the contractor of being very patient with this process, but, but basically, you know, they're ready to go as soon as the funding is made available for them. And again, we want to thank Congressman Huffman and his staff for their work on that. FEMA is very difficult to work with and we're lucky to have a congressman who was aware of this situation and took it very seriously. The flags are also out for the locations for the tree installations. So it's a bit confusing because we ran out of flags and then, and then there are different colored flags. Basically, the white flags just are locating the sprinkler system. The other colored flags would be, the red and green would be where the trees would be installed. So work on that should begin shortly. We'll be getting a schedule from the contractor here hopefully by the end of this week. We, the council may also want to make sure to check your email today. We sent off some correspondence to state officials related to the CalFire headquarters development project here in Rialto, including, you know, basically the architectural engineering agreement was signed and executed on January 2nd of this year. We didn't receive notification on that until the 21st of March. But in reviewing that, we had the, we had a site plan developed, just a conceptual site plan using square footage and whatnot. And again, just confirms that with an 18.4 acre parcel that those facilities can fit on six acres and that there is, you know, potentially quite a bit of surplus property there that, that we'd like to work with the state on in terms of its most beneficial, most beneficial use. So again, that contract with the architectural firm helps spell out the square footage, number of buildings, types of buildings. And then we were able to kind of put that all together in, you know, in quick fashion. Doesn't mean that that design is going to be anywhere remotely what, what comes to fruition, but it is a feasible, feasible planning. So with that, I will go ahead and see if the council has any questions and return to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. And I'd like to thank Congressman Huffman and his staff as well. It's, they heard us and they voted to bat for us. And so we should all recognize that. We appreciate it, for sure. Are, do you have any questions?
Already have some. I'm good. Thank you.
Just one question on the monument road. Will we still have to make some kind of action?
Yeah. So we're going to, right now, if everything goes according to plan, there's probably at least a $211 match that the city would have to, would have to bear because the slip out was half on City Incorporated land, half on County Incorporated. It was agreed that the county would take the lead on the project because of their speciality in this storm damaged area and that the city would share the cost 50/50 with the county, the local shared cost. So there's a federal portion, the state portion, and then the remaining local portion, which is, I believe, 7.25% between the city and the county.
Okay. Now they're doing, they're doing more work besides just that slip out. It feels like for one over $90 or something like that.
So they are just doing that slip out. There's multiple other problems on that road, mostly on the county side up, further up slope. But that's, that, just that short segment is, you know, we're talking about kind of 200 feet. Just that short segment is, is what's getting repaired. Thank you.
Amendment, part of the thing that Congressman Huffman helped us with is that they're doing the reinforced version versus just the original?
Yes. So, yeah. So there's a kind of a long story to it, but, but there was some geotechnical work done that confirmed that the sort of soldier pile wall approach was the appropriate approach. And normally, you know, that should have been enough for FEMA. However, FEMA also kind of arbitrarily put a cap on the cost of the overall project. And so, or what it would contribute to the overall project, which is also kind of unusual and strange and unhelpful. And so, you know, bottom line is in 2017, this storm damage happened. We're hoping to get this buttoned up in 2024.
Thank you. Does anyone have, Rich, do you have any questions about the staff report?
No.
No? Okay. Are there any hand raised, any emails? Then we will close that section and move on to item J. Authorize the city engineer to issue bid for the Clean California Ill River Trails project, page forty-three in our packets.
Thank you. I'm Mayor Garrens and members of the council. So you will recall the city was, had been trying for multiple years through some different grant opportunities, ATP and some partners, grants to build the Ill River Trail. This has been a project on the city's radar for at least seven or eight years of trying to move the project forward. Then back in 2021, Governor Newsom launched the Clean California Program, which was a new, new initiative at the time, as the state had some additional financial resources at that point in time. And they created a pot of about $300 million for local beautification of, of, of underutilized public spaces. So in this case, the council authorized us to put together a grant application for two projects. One was our gateway beautification project, which is underway. And then also this, this trail project, which is, which is what this agenda item is about. So it's been a long path to get here and a lot of work to go into this trail. Rialto definitely deserves a bike trail. I think most of the cities up here have that form of kind of exclusive, non-motorized recreational trail. The river is really one of the city's best assets. Fishermen, recreators use it constantly. We know that it has been abused in the past with a lot of litter. And over the years, the city and various community members have organized ad hoc cleanup days to, to clean up the river, including towing. The first year I was here, we did multiple burnt out vehicles from the river bar. And each year, it seems to be getting better and better. And so this provides us an opportunity to, you know, formalize the entrance into Edwards, Edwards, at Edwards Drive into the river bar for vehicles and also for pedestrians and creating kind of additional facilities for non-motorized use. So today we have Rebecca Crowe and Luke Allen here. They'll give a short presentation to talk about the project. We want to get this out to bid basically as soon as possible. We do have a very strict deadline on this project. It's already been extended, but we need to have this project completed by the end of this, this year. The state is highly unlikely to authorize additional timeline extensions given the state's financial situation. So we want to get this project delivered and hope behind us so we can move on to other fund projects and, and work on those. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to our reps from GHD.
Well, thanks for the introduction, Kyle. Thanks for the mayor and councilmembers for having me today. A good introduction. Basically, I just wanted to do a presentation on the project and the main project elements and, you know, start about the bidding and construction schedule overall. So the project is a class one trail, as Kyle mentioned, between Edwards Drive and Davis Street. It's going to be along the river, a repairing area along the Ill River. It'll include about one-third mile of paved asphalt paved trail and about a 200-foot long concrete we call ADA ramp to be in compliance with ADA, well, to be ADA compliant, we, and due to create changes, we need to provide a facility that connects from the river to Davis Street. And then it also includes some parking lot improvements near the Edwards Drive area and informational kiosks on both ends of the trail, as well as interpretive signage along the trail and community art installation, community art installation at the Edwards Drive parking lot area. I'll go to the next one. So from there, so with that, that's the overview of the project. The overall bidding strategy, as we had presented in a previous city council meeting, is we were talking about strategies of how to bid the project depending on how the bidding market plays out and whether or not bids cover high or low. So what we did is we set up the strategies to be able to bid as much of the project as possible and still be able to use funding and then pursue additional funding in the future. So the approach is where we have a base bid for the pavement, the asphalt paved trail from Edwards Drive all the way up to Davis Street right just before the ADA ramp, which in this image here is the highlighted red area. And then as funding allows, we would award the additive bid, which is the ramp itself. And as I mentioned, the ramp is required to meet grade changes or elevation changes between this, the bottom and the top of it is about 10 or 11 feet of change over a short distance. If the ramp cannot be awarded, it would be phased to a future, future project as funding is available. It would effectively be a shovel-ready project, meaning that we can take the plans as it is, wouldn't require much effort to bid it through another funding program. And we have coordinated with Clean California Local Grant Programs administrators to make sure that this is approved within the, the grant agreement because it is a scope change by removing a portion of the project. And they, they're on board with it. We've already negotiated that with them. And then also working with the city on the connectivity, communicating that and whether or not it'll be awarded, communicating the connectivity from if, suppose that the ramp can't be awarded, how that would play out once it's started with the bid. And next slide. And the overall bidding strategy is if the council approves a bidding of this project, then we would advertise it tomorrow. And in the next two weeks, we would have an mandatory pre-bid conference. The idea is a non-mandatory, if you're not anywhere, is it allows smoking of bidders from further outside of the area because if they're mandatory, it would be hard to get local, get contractors to travel out to the site to bid on a project as well. And then we have bid opening around April 25th, near the end of the month. And we, right now, we have it listed as the next city council meeting after bid opening would be May 7th. And that would be the date that it could be approved, give the contractor the award to perceive of the project. And that's intended. Construction dates are, known to proceed to be around the end of May. Construction will occur between June and October type thing. And then we work with, just the project close out and final grant requirements by December. Generally, any construction activities need to be done by the 7th and 31st. Well, that's the overview of the project and scheduled. Any questions?
Do we, do we have a match on?
So, no. So this was 100% funded. That was one of the things when we first presented the grant opportunity, there was opportunities within the grant for severely disadvantaged, economically severely disadvantaged. opportunities within the grant for severely disadvantaged, economically severely disadvantaged communities to be 100% covered. And so we knew, well, even before application was submitted, that we, you know, stood a very good chance of getting 100% funded. So this is 100% funded, you know, if, you know, again, I just reiterate that, you know, we've run into some issues regarding potentially inflation, depending on how the bids pop up, but that we tried to gear this in a way where there's no way that, you know, city funds will be required of the project to to complete the entire project. So that's why essentially that final ADA phased ramp, which was not originally considered in the cost of the of the project, because the trail was originally bought to be placed at a higher elevation. That's why it's phased, so that we protect the city from having to cover the additional costs, the unforeseen costs of the project. So.
Well, I remember discussing this in this thing with the inflation thing, was I think you were pretty clear back then, that weren't going to help us on the inflation or?
No, this is kind of a newer project. I don't think Caltrans had ever administered something quite like this exactly before. I don't know if it is a program the city's or the state is going to be able to continue to fund into the future. But, you know, hopefully, hopefully, they will, because we think that there are some really good outcomes for this community in terms of of kind of revitalizing some of these these public spaces of the gateway and and this section. Of course, the the trail concept has been actually around for a very long time of having a trail wrapped all the way around the riparian area of Riedel and ultimately connecting to the Redwood Trail and also regionally to the to the other cities. So obviously, that's a vision that's 30 or 50 years down the road, but you got to start it somewhere.
Councilmember Warren, no question. Yeah, I just have one question on when you get to Davis, and I know the phased ramp bit, but is there going to be a way if you don't need an ADA ramp to, because I know right now, there's a step down and everything, that still be there, just kind of cleaned up?
And actually, Luke, I'll jump in on my side, I had the most recent conversation with the state about this as well. So, you know, if we end up having to phase the project, which seems likely, the ADA portion of the trail would end, but it ends at an area where there already are pre-existing trails. They they go to Davis Street, they go out back out to the river. So there will be a way for able-bodied individuals to get onto Davis Street, as there is today. So you can use the stairs that were installed by public works several years ago. Also, as an incidence of of the construction, it is likely that the contractor will want to access the trail from Davis Street using heavy equipment. And so the only way to really do that would be to sort of basically create a road. That's again incidental to the project, is is not, you know, designed that way. But that trail could in theory be left behind afterwards, and so there may be a slightly hiking-type trail into the into the facility. So we're hopeful, we'll see how these bids come in. It's still, it's still possible that they could come in where the entire project is covered, you know, so we'll, we we hope that that's what's going to happen. But if not, again, as Luke mentioned, it is a shovel-ready project that should be competitive for other sources of funding. And we're certainly going to, you know, continue to pursue those avenues if they come to that.
Thank you, Mr. Management. Are there any, are there any, Rebecca, were you going to?
Back up, just in case. You're like, go ahead. No, Luke and Kyle have done a great job, and we're, yeah, we're hopeful. And the piece that we're taking apart is it's going to be very appealing to funders. We decided that unfortunately, it's the ADA part that not going to be very appealing to underwriters or shelters.
Thank you. Karen, you know, anyone out there in the audience? You have any questions? Okay, well, thank you very much for coming and making the presentation. We were bored of getting this thing rolling. Now, we probably have an action we have to do though. Is there a motion to authorize the city engineer to issue the bid for the Clean California Ill River Trail Project?
So moved.
And a motion, there's a second.
Oh, sorry.
We have a motion and a second vote. Motion carries for zero. Thank you both. Now, then moves on to council reports.
Went to the H-Cub meeting, and they had an opportunity to fast-track a couple of projects that were trying to squeeze in beyond what they normally have other counties that would have had success in doing so, so they're going to try that. Also, they presented a study, a master's thesis on the trails in that area up there, based on safety and accessibility and the overall picture is that people feel safe on the trails, they enjoy the trails being there, they're much nicer than they were before, before the trails came, and overall, it was a positive for the community.
Thank you, Councilmember Lawson.
Yeah, I should have asked this question when we were still here, but is there a women, is there a timeframe, and we, well, obviously, can't, I'm not saying honestly, but we can't fund the ADA part, is there a time that expires down the road, meaning you're going to last, you've got to do it in two years?
No, no, so it'll be, it's basically a plan set. The only thing that might would need to be updated, depending on how further on down the road it is, is the cost estimate. But that's really a concern of the city and not so much contractors. So, yeah, so there there are potentially cost escalations, obviously, you know, it's cheaper to build something today than it is tomorrow. And so, so the project likely will become more expensive, particularly when we're talking about potentially five years down the road.
But back on the reports, we had an RCA meeting, and we put out for, what kind of praising them, I hate the short message, but they're trying to do another set of micro bridges within the county, so they're going to, they partnered with four of the local tribes, because two tribes, two of the tribes are on the RCA now, they're trying to get a third one onto that. And this, the micro bridge, like if you're familiar with, they did it on Arcata, they took the batteries there, and they had the solar panels, and this one is, it's matching, it's matching funds for the tribes, but not for the RCA. RCA is, is such a big project, it's like 160 million overall, there's 80 million in the grants that they're trying to, they're trying to secure. It was too big for any of the tribes to take on. And so they partnered with RCA, and so they're applying for that 80 million dollars to put those in. And they, they're probably good primary for the actual project. So, because if there's batteries, and they get power, and then also when it's good weather, RCA is able to bid on high-end power and sell them back to the customers. And then next week is, they still have the end name, so we didn't have one last month for lack of forums, and hopefully, we'll be at forums this, this month. And that's all, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. My redact meeting last month was canceled due to lack of forums, so nothing to report there. I wonder if people are on the same committee, RCA, yeah. I have a chamber of commerce meeting this Friday, I believe that would probably be at the Resource Center at noon. My updates from the chamber are rambly and complex, so if you are really genuinely interested, feel free to ask me. I have a board of directors meeting for Craters Without Litters coming up, April 12. And just to remind everybody, that is our brand-new forthcoming low-cost paid interclinic in Fernbridge, very close by. There will be an open house at that clinic over the summer, I will let everybody know, and invite you to come see. I really, really want to thank both the fire department and the Resource Center for the Easter egg event that they put on over the weekend, very well attended. I was happy to see at least 60 children in full mayhem, running around, fighting Easter eggs, and winning prizes and wearing bunny ears. I just, I think that this community is doing very well when it comes to kid-friendly and actually, you know, just for kids type of events over there. So that was yet another success for us. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. And I have a HGA meeting tomorrow morning, and side of the commission next week, the side of the commission meeting next week, where they're actually presenting a report on the Burndale earthquake that they, from the hearings that were held here and interviews that they did with different people and entities, and they will be issuing that report next week, I believe. And I want to thank Kyle specifically, because they really, they bugged him, they got me to bug him, and I don't mean it in a bad way, he was a bug, I just mean to say they were on him and he responded, and he was a big part of, hopefully, the more accurate version.
That's renamed, I'm sorry, yeah.
So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion, second? I seconded, okay. Getting a adjourn till April 16th. Thank you, everyone, thanks, Rich. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Rich.